WDEV News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fentress County Commission. The Fentress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month and you can see it live on Channel 12 Cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fentress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equal Housing Leader Member FDIC.
The Fentress County Board of Commissioners is solid order. Please rise for the presentation of color by the Clark Range High School Color Guard. That will be followed by the pledge to the flag of Third District Commissioner Donald Williams, and then opening prayer of our Third District Commissioner Benny Hughes.
Forward, march. Color guard, hold. Present, arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the representative of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Colors reverse, march. Forward, march. Color guard, hold. Orders, colors. Orders, arms.
Bow your heads please. Heavenly Father, we thank you this night for everything that you do for us. We thank you for your many blessings, the blessing of being able to live and work in this county. We ask that your goodness and blessings be upon our county, be upon those that work, and try to do the betterment for everyone. And bless us that we might make the right decisions for all in this county. Watch over us, our county, and our country in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
We'll have roll call my representatives of our county board.
Here.
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 Our president, we do have a forum. First on our agenda is approval of minutes from the October 16th, 2017 special call meeting, or then the special call meeting October 30th, 2017. Everybody had a chance to look over the meeting, or the minutes?
Motion accepted.
Have a motion to accept. We have a second.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Bar and discussion, roll call vote please.
Four.
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 Motion passes. Next on the agenda is approval of notary applications. We have Amanda Key Penanter, Evan Matthew Wright, Emily E. Persinger, KCC Dishman, and Lisa Marie Hines. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Four.
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 Motion passes. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation of a proclamation to Jackie Selby, our Solid Waste Director, in honor of his designation as the Keep Tennessee Beautiful and Martin L. Kennedy Outstanding Leader as Grant Administrator of the Year in the State of Tennessee. And it's my honor to have Representative Kelly Keisling here to make that presentation. And I want to say, Jackie, congratulations from Fentress County on your great job as a Solid Waste Director and winning this prestigious award two years in a row at Fentress County Solid Waste as been identified as number one in their category by the State of Tennessee at the Keep Tennessee Beautiful Conference. So, Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. September the 19th was when, of course, the mayor and I and Jackie were there at the Airport Marriott in Nashville at the T-Dot and the Keep Tennessee Beautiful Conference. Those in attendance were both Commissioner of Homeland Security as well as the Commissioner of, of course, T-Dot. And we, we're just proud as punch of you, buddy. I've got, we, and I really appreciate the opportunity to do this, we've got a proclamation, beautiful proclamation, that Jackie, I'm going to present to you, and as you hold that, I, if the commission would allow me to, Mayor, I would like to read this.
Go right ahead, Kelly.
Thank you. It reads, "Whereas it is fitting that we should recognize those citizens who have distinguished themselves as community leaders of whom we can all be proud. Whereas one such noteworthy individual is Jackie Selby, who recently received the Martin L. Kennedy Award for Outstanding Litter Grant Administrator from Keep Tennessee Beautiful, a state affiliate of Keep America Beautiful. Whereas named in honor of the first Tennessee Department of Transportation Highway Beautification Office Administrator, the Martin L. Kennedy Award recognizes outstanding professional service by a litter grant program or Keep America Beautiful staff member. And whereas Jackie first exemplified his steadfast commitment to a cleaner Tennessee in his position as a recycling coordinator and overseer of many school projects for the education of our young people, including aluminum can, plastic, and phone book collection drives. The success of the programs came in no small measure from Mr. Selby's ability to create competition among students which led to ever increasing collections of recyclables. And whereas in addition to his many duties as Fentress County Solid Waste Director, Mr. Selby, single-handedly administers the county's highly successful litter grant program. The program has fostered such a steadfast, excuse me, such a steady increase in pickup and recycling rates that Fentress County is currently number one in recycling among its 37 tier counties in the state." And that's, that's just what the mayor referenced just a moment ago. Whereas Jackie Selby and his staff has also provided a significant boost to anti-littering education by producing an informative video that ran on local media outlets and distributing them on custom shirts bearing the message, "Don't throw it out," at Fentress County's annual Halloween on the square event. Whereas Mr. Selby also distributed large numbers of anti-litter activity books throughout the community to educate citizens on laws pertaining to the transport of covered loads, he printed an informative brochure that was handed out alongside 1,000 free tarps at area convenience sites. Whereas a highly respected member of his community, Jackie Selby epitomizes the spirit of volunteerism and commitment to service that are characteristics of all true Tennesseans, and his significant contributions to his fellow citizens should be specially recognized. Now therefore, I, Beth Harwell, Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 110th General Assembly of the State of Tennessee, at the request of and in conjunction with Representative Kelly Keisling, Representative John Mark Wendell, and Senator Ken Jaeger, do hereby proclaim that we honor and commend Jackie Selby upon his receipt of the Martin L. Kennedy Award for Outstanding Litter Grant Administrator and for his exceptional service to the people of Tennessee. We salute his professional expertise and personal excellence and wish him all the best in his future endeavors. This is proclaimed in Nashville on the 28th day of August. Now, Jackie, it is signed by the Speaker, myself, and of course, Representative Wendell and Senator Jaeger. Congratulations, Jackie. I'll give you the mic if you want to say anything. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate it. Jack, thank you very much.
I need a picture, gentlemen. Kelly.
Kelly, come back up, Jackie. Manny, you can stop right there. Hold on.
Come on, Chris.
Okay, next on our agenda is the forward report from the Industrial Development Board and ID Manager Scott Sandman.
Good evening, everybody. I'll try to make this brief. I've got a two-page report I've handed you out. I'm going to hit the highlights. First part of the report is RFP and RFI activity for the last four months. We've been very busy. There's been a lot of projects coming through the state and through TVA. I think we had in total 21 projects that were looking for sites. Out of those 21 projects, we were able to submit for three of them. The three that we submitted, if you look under Section 2B, that's Project 2SE, it was a project looking for 40 to 50 acres, built 150,000 square foot building. We were able to submit on it. There was a project, Fire, that's number, or letter D under number four. They were looking at a 50-acre green field, 600,000 square foot facility. We were able to submit for it. And then the state was working with a very large automotive project that they came and looked at Clark Range on. They were looking for, I think it was 300 to 400 acres. It was a billion-dollar investment. It's a search that's going on all across southeast United States. And as far as I know, that project is still active. So, those are sort of the highlights. Of the 21 projects, there were four projects, I'm sorry, there were six projects that were seeking spec buildings. And we were not able to respond to those. We had, we would have been able to respond to 40% of the projects that came through. So, that sort of emphasizes the need to try to move forward with our spec building project. And I'll talk a little bit about that in just a minute. If you look on the second page of the report, or the back page, some of the highlights there, we had former Commissioner of Economic Development Randy Boyd come to Fentress County, spend some time with us. He's now one of the Republican candidates for governor, and he spent some time in Fentress County seeing our industrial sites and getting to know our community a little bit better. We've been notified by TVA that they'll be hosting a fifth round of grant applications. We plan to submit for that. Number 20, spec building program this past month, ID Board voted to start putting some money away annually to try to develop, we need about a half a million dollars to build a spec building. We're going to start seeding that each, each year. Number 21, Highway 127, we've been in contact with them about the development of the road and what's forthcoming this next legislative session and the budget years. There's parts of the project that look like they'll go to construction funding over in Cumberland County, and then there's some sections that are waiting for environmental review. All three sections in Fentress County are in that status. And there's supposed to be a public meeting about the Fentress County sections in the next six weeks or so. It may happen before Christmas. It may be after the first of the year. Number 22, down at the bottom of the page, we're going to do something after the first of the year that we hope you guys will be a part of. We're going to bring in TVA and their trainers from their Economic Development Department, and we're going to go back through Economic Development 101. This is for local officials. We've got a new, several new members on the Industrial Board. They haven't been through that training. Those that have, we're going to do a refresher. We're going to invite the county commission and the two city councils to come to that, and also maybe some other entities from the county, and they'll come in and do a presentation. We've got the dates there. They're going to follow that up about a month later with a training session on site visits where you get together the team that will be meeting with industries when they come in communities. You go through some training, identify everyone that needs to be involved, have some dress rehearsals, and then later in April, we're going to go through and have a mock site visit where we have some of the state and TVA officials bring in people that have been involved in big projects across the state, and they're going to pretend to be site consultants and review our community and review our team. And it'll be a chance for us to practice. It's been a long time since we've had a visit from site consultants and company officials. It's something that we need to be good at, so this will be a chance for us to have some dry runs and make sure we're presenting Fentress County as best we can when those opportunities arise. So, that's, that's sort of the highlights of the report. One other thing I was going to highlight and talk a little bit about to your budget chairman, Larry, is the ID Board, one of the powers it has is to do pilot agreements. And those are payment in lieu of tax agreements. When companies come into a community and they are leasing a building or property from the ID Board, that property is exempt. And typically, a payment in lieu of tax agreement is basically like a contract between the ID Board and the company where they will pay a portion, a pro-rata portion of the taxes that are due on their facility if it was on the tax rolls and not exempt. So, we're, we're in an agreement like that with Fitzgerald Blotter Kits. And the ID Board, in that agreement, has collected some in lieu of payments from Fitzgerald. I want to present those to Larry tonight. These two checks represent in lieu of payments from 2016 and 17. Their agreement says that in the second year of their lease, they'll pay 20% of the taxes that would be due if it was on the tax rolls. And the third year, they will pay 40, and then the next year, 60, then 80, then 100%. So, I've got two checks from the ID Board, which is basically just the conduit for the money to come from Fitzgerald. Presented to Larry, this is approximately $6,700, and that represents about 40% of the taxes that would be due on that building. So, Larry, based on the agreement, I think that's just supposed to come to the county commission and y'all put it in the general fund and do whatever you need to do. That's about all I have tonight. Anybody have any questions?
I got one. When is those, or where are those meetings going to be held? You know yet?
That's to be determined. We're going to try to, we may have them here in the courthouse. It'll depend on how many people we have that sign up and how much room we need. But we will let you know as soon as we nail that down, you guys will get invitations to those events.
Thank you, Scott.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Okay, next on the agenda is consideration of approval of a resolution 201-7-22, providing an education incentive payment for the fiscal year 2017-18 to officials and employees who have attained designation of Certified Public Administrator as of June 2017 under the UT County Officials Certificate Training, Certificate Training Program. And Jackie, Jackie, would you like to come up in just a second? Jackie Selby has completed this training that, pretty, pretty long and extensive. Jack, can you briefly describe how many classes you had to do?
In order, in order to pass this class, you have to take 40 elective credits, which is basically 40 classes. On top of that, there are four core classes that you must take, and you must score at least a 70 on each test to pass. The core classes are four-hour classes, so that's another 16 hours on top of that 40 you've already put in class hours. Then after you do that, you have to take a final exam, which is administered. That takes up two, three hours to do the exam. After you pass that, you get an invitation to what they call the capstone event. Capstone event is a three-day class. You're there with the other people who have qualified for this certification. You spend about 17 hours a day with those people. It's not just the eight hours you're there because you're having to work on projects together at night as well. So, it teaches you, first of all, to work with other people, which is a good thing. And it also teaches you what each county office does, what, what they actually do. And it helps me help those other people when they got something coming up because, you know, I know they're not just making it up. We've really got to get this done. So, you're able to schedule time, hopefully, to help them and get that done in a timely manner because there's deadlines. Maryland has deadlines in her office. Everybody does. But that's the one thing that I took away from it the most is learning what every other office in the county does. I mean, when I first started, I didn't have a clue what people did. Now, I'm not very smart, but I know a little bit about what people do and what it takes from us to help them because we're all in it together, whether we want to be or not. We're all in it together. And if, if this has taught me anything, it's taught me how to work with people a little better. And you know, that's what it's all about. Plus, I gained a lot of knowledge about our county and what your jobs are, and I know what you're required to do, and you know, I know what I'm required to do. And it's just helped a lot as far as making things smoother about going along.
Well, we appreciate the, the hard work and the dedication that you put into this.
Very well.
It's run by C-Task, and it's, it's a good program. Most counties have it. I know that money's a little tight, but we set, set pretty low compared to what a lot of counties do at $1,500. And that would partially reimburse some of the...
Well, you know, I paid for it out of our education budget because it's helping the citizens. That's what I used it for. But you have to obtain 18 continuing education credits per year to keep this certification. And then there's a $100 recertification fee per year. But, you know, it, after you pay that, every class that you take is paid for. We're going to an OSHA training in December, two-day training, 10-hour industry OSHA. Doesn't cost a penny. I mean, you know, and that's more knowledge that we can learn, me and Jason's going with me, my assistant. So, we're, we know what to look for a little bit more, you know? And I figure that that knowledge will help us do our job better because we know what to look for and never not getting tagged. So...
Yeah, appreciate it, Jack.
Thank you.
Any other of our wishes about this resolution?
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt, do we have a second?
Say.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
Read Section 1. Help me understand what that says, what that says.
I would interpret it as saying that C-Task is encouraging counties to adopt and support and set forth money to, to pay for this or to reward employees who receive this designation.
By when?
Well, it don't say a date exactly.
By June of 2017.
Yeah, you would adopt this annually, so it's your option to adopt it for the next person that would obtain the certification.
So, I, I don't understand, though. It, administrator who submits to the county mayor proof of such attainment on or before June of 2017.
Correct. So, Jackie had his certification before June, so you would authorize him to have the incentive, and then next year, if someone else already did it, then you could reauthorize that the resolution.
Okay, so this, this $1,500 is just going to hit us one time because one person's all that?
Yes.
On this resolution.
Okay, and that, that was prior to?
Yes.
Everything submitted and untied.
Any other questions? Roll call vote please.
Four.
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 In four, none against, motion passes. And again, congratulations, Jack, on the hard work. Next on the agenda, consideration of resolution 201-7-24, request an action regarding the scoring on the October ACT exam at Alvin C. York Institute. Leslie, would you want to explain that a little bit?
Mike, I was contacted as county attorney by a Knoxville attorney who's asked me, Knox County Attorney, rather, to bring before you all a little bit of information regarding the ACT test that was given on October the 17th. Apparently, both Knox County, Bearden High School, and YAI received a test on October 17th that was the same test given on October 3rd. The ACT then refused to score or to validate. I believe they've scored the test, they've just refused to validate those scores for the October 17th exam for YAI and for Bearden. Now, what Knox County has done, and what they've asked us to join in, is to ask the State of Tennessee to take some action to resolve this and to keep it from happening again and to provide some oversight. Now, it's my understanding that YAI is not going to necessarily appeal and ask that those scores be validated. They're going to give all the children a chance to take the test again on December 3rd. However, this seems to be happening more frequently. Apparently, this happened in the State of Tennessee in 2015. It happened in Ohio earlier, just a few months ago this year. And in that case, the Ohio Attorney General, based on just what they, they're asking you all to do here tonight, is to start a local action which kind of goes up the chain to the governor and to the attorney general. And Ohio's attorney general said, "If you can't do better than this, we are not going to allow you to do business in our state." The State of Tennessee requires that all students take either the ACT or the SAT prior to graduation. So, if those students are required to do so, then the ACT should be held accountable to make it right for them. Again, we're not asking them necessarily to go in and score those particularly. You're asking them, the state, to provide some action to resolve the misadministration of the ACT and provide oversight that holds the ACT administrators accountable for their missteps. This wasn't anything that anyone at local level, in any educator did. It wasn't anything that the students did. It was the actual ACT themselves. It's a, you have one job, and it's to get the right booklets of tests into the hands of these students on a particular day. And the students have been prejudiced, there's no doubt. The December 1st admissions date, the scholarships that are available, those things, they will potentially be missing out on, and there's no correcting that. It only happened in this particular testing date here and in Bearden. Now, Knox County Mayor Tim Burchett has been very vocal and very active. Now, Knox County Mayor Tim Burchett has been very vocal and very active in reaching out to state government. They're just asking you all to join in, so that this prevents anything in the future happening to other children.
Any questions?
I move to pass this resolution.
We'll have a motion to pass this resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Barring discussion, roll call vote, please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Two.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is consideration of changing the rate of pay for the medical examiner or medical director for the county, and the medical investigator or coroner. And the suggestion is change the medical examiner or directors up from fifty to one hundred dollars per case, and the medical investigator from twenty-five to fifty dollars plus mileage per case. And for your information, the number of cases that we normally have is between twenty and thirty, thirty max. So you're looking at a total, total expenditure of about forty-five hundred dollars were that to happen. More likely, it would be in the three thousand dollar range. But this would bring us, not up to par, but at least closer to par than, than we have been with our expenses here.
And, and this previous pay was set when?
Nineteen ninety...
I believe the statute indicates about that the state changed these rules, so to speak, of appointing different persons in different positions in nineteen ninety-four. But I will say this, Jeff, and I'm not, let me just jump here and say, it's actually county medical examiner, not medical director. And we don't have the position of quote-unquote coroner, because a coroner under the statute is an elected position. So they changed around some of the terminology, and in doing so, the medical examiner will then appoint some, at least one, but up to three, medical investigators, which are like a coroner, but they're appointed by the direct, excuse me, see, you got me saying it, medical examiner, and they don't have the title of coroner. Make any sense?
Medical examiner would be the doctor and medical investigator formerly known as coroner.
And it's been about twenty-three years since that pay has been adjusted?
Yes.
I, I move to make those changes.
Have a motion to make those changes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Anyone wish to speak to the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Four.
Don.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
The motion passes.
Next on the agenda is consideration appointment of Dr. Chad Cananser to the position of medical examiner for Fentress County. This would be for a five-year period. Dr. Clout recently turned in his resignation. I think he's beginning to kind of slow down, and agreed for retirement, maybe. So Dr. Cananser has agreed to, to fill that position for a five-year period. What are your wishes?
Motion to appoint.
Motion to appoint. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Don.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Two.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
Ten-four, none against. Motion passes. Next is a consideration of approval of the Fentress County Senior Center to submit an application for a Department of Health Access to Health Through Healthy Active Built Environments Grant. Kim, I think this is one-hundred percent grant?
Yeah, I'd actually didn't realize they were applying for it, and I was thinking the county, we would go after it, but thank goodness the senior citizens going after it, because it was an eighty, I think it's an eighty thousand dollar grant with zero match, so it's awesome. We need to take advantage of that, you know, any opportunity we get. And there's definitely room for growth at the senior center. We realized that for a while, so hopefully, maybe they can get this grant and gives them an opportunity to expand up there, because they have an excellent center right now. So it's a good idea.
Okay, was that in the form of a motion to approve?
I will make that in the form of a motion to approve.
Oh, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Pass.
Benny.
Pass.
Don.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Two.
Eight-four, two pass.
Motion passes. Next is acceptance of a resignation letter, excuse me, from Rob Andries off his seat on the Fentress County Planning Commission representing the fifth district.
So moved.
Have a motion to accept that from fifth district commissioner. Do I have a second? Motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Don.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Two.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
The motion passes. Next on the agenda is consideration appointment of Dr. Chad Cananser to the position of medical examiner for Fentress County. This would be for a five-year period. Dr. Clout recently turned in his resignation. I think he's beginning to kind of slow down, and agreed for retirement, maybe. So Dr. Cananser has agreed to, to fill that position for a five-year period. What are your wishes?
Motion to appoint.
Motion to appoint. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Don.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Two.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four, none against. The motion passes.
Next on the agenda, consideration of approval of a letter outlining the Fentress County Transition Plan Development for Americans with Disabilities Act. Everybody have a chance to look that over?
We just need to accept it.
Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Anyone wish to speak to the motion? Roll call vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Don.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
The motion passes. Next is consideration of approval of declaration of surplus property listed as non-working or damaged items from the office of the county court clerk. Maryland, what a mess. By the way, if this is approved, solid waste has volunteered to take all that.
Mr. Chairman.
Lester Parks.
I would like to make a motion that we accept this. However, I'd like to change the wording in the first sentence...
Okay.
...to all of the listed items or non-working items that need to be donated to solid waste for recycle.
Donated to solid waste for recycle.
Yeah, and I make that motion.
And that's a form of a motion.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Don.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Two.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four, none against. Motion passes. By the way, Jackie, I don't want you on the agenda next month, okay? You've been all over it tonight. Okay, number twenty, consideration of budget amendments. Marcia, are you ready?
Okay, the first one is EMA. This is a six hundred dollar payment from the city of Allard for, not this past October, but the October before, for the work he does out there, great, he can cut traffic. This is just put the money in his budget, in the EMA budget.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve. Do I have a second? Motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Don.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Two.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
Motion passes. Next, Board of Education, they've got four different ones. Marcia, could we lump those together, or do we have to need to do those individually?
Yeah, I'd like to lump those together and pass them.
Okay.
And the lady that does their bookkeeping has written a letter here explaining, and basically, a lot of it is, she was brand-new at doing budgets, so she just made a few errors that she needs to correct here. None of them are actually going to cost any money. First one, basically adding cost centers, that's to separate money out so that they can track it better between cost centers. Second one, actually, she had budgeted too much, so she's actually taking seventy-five hundred back out of that budget. The third one, again, she budgeted too much. And then the fourth one is to, again, put some cost centers with line items to help track the money better.
Any questions?
Make the motion.
Got a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Don.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Two.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
The motion passes.
This is for the office that we just appointed, the Human Resources Risk Manager person, Becky Crockett. We had originally discussed putting this under the county commission budget, so I have done one to add this to the county commission, because I didn't want to totally disrespect her wishes. However, I would really like to make its, its own budget under Personnel Office. It's going to be a whole lot easier to track the monies for the county commission versus this office if we keep it in two totally separate budgets. And I would also like to, whichever one you go with, where I've got down here, the one-oh-six deputy line item, which is her salary, I would actually like to change that to, from one-oh-six to one-oh-five, which is supervisor-director. And all of this comes out of money that we had left over, the building improvements. I had money budgeted for the roof, for the ambulance service, quite a bit more than, than we actually, the bid came in. So we had that money left over, and then the other, I wanted to take out other capital outlay, which we have, I think, sixty-seven thousand dollars there that's really not earmarked for anything. So I thought we could take twelve thousand from that to cover this budget.
Any question?
Also, some of these items won't be seen again next year, like the, I'm sorry, the data processing equipment, her computers, the furniture to set up the office, and some of this office equipment. Those are pretty much one-time expenditures that shouldn't be in next year's budget.
And where exactly is this office going to be located?
It's right here where the...
Where the old map room was.
I have a question. What's the furniture and fixtures for fifty-two hundred dollars?
That's the desk, filing cabinets, office chair.
And on that, she got a fifty percent discount off list price, buying it to grand, I think.
So we had to buy, we didn't have anything that we could utilize that the county already had, that just seems like more than...
Well, the county doesn't have any surplus items, because we don't have anywhere to put surplus, so...
So they get recycled through solid waste.
Actually, she did say, "Do you have surplus anywhere that I could go get?" And I said, "No, we don't have anywhere for surplus, therefore, we don't have any surplus." So...
Marcia, I think I missed, or couldn't hear you, on the, you're wanting to change her designation from deputy to director? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Then we're going to get into another debate in the near future on what we pay our directors?
Yeah.
If we change it from a deputy to a director? And, and if she's, I, I think if you're going to have the director's title, you should have employees underneath you. She has none. So, I mean, I, I don't know that that title should go to her. Nothing to take away from the job that she's going to do, but...
So just leave it at one-oh-six, then?
I, I, I mean, that would be my suggestion, but now, it's whatever the commission wants to do. But, I mean, if you're going to give someone a director's title, that means they should have some type of supervision over other people, and she doesn't, she won't have anyone in her office but herself.
Okay. That's fine.
Second question. If we change this to a personnel offices, office, how does that play into the commission actually still being the one that hires this person, not having it in the commission's budget?
Does that pass by resolution? Then it shouldn't make any difference.
Shouldn't make any difference?
Yeah.
I wouldn't think.
Okay. I move that we approve, then.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?[1586.01] Rule call, vote.
Jim.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jacquet.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Don.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Again.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Nine-four-one against.
Uh, motion passes, uh, next Health Department.
The state has, uh, given an increase in salaries to the Health Department, and I've, I've attached the original budget and the amended budget, and anything that is spent out of this particular budget, the 55190, is reimbursed by the state, so this is all state money.
Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Rule call, vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jacquet.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Don.
Four.
Larry. Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Motion passes, uh, and then last one, County Clerk.
Let's do the sheriff next.
Sheriff, okay, excuse me, Sheriff.
Okay, patrol car was recently totaled, I think a lady ran a stop sign or pulled out in front of the patrol car, anyway, it wasn't Deputy's fault, and the insurance company has already agreed to pay 11,879 for the car. We don't actually have the money yet because we're having to do some paperwork, but we will be receiving that amount, so for right now, because they're wanting to go ahead and, and replace the vehicle, I'm taking that money out of fund balance, but when the check comes in from the insurance company, it will just go back into fund balance to replace this money.
And, and as far as the record too, it also, we're adding 6,871 dollars from the drug fund to that to purchase the vehicle that's replacing the patrol car, correct?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Rule call, vote.
Kim.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jacquet.
Four.
Four. Benny.
Four.
Don.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Ten-four-nine against.
Motion passes, uh, now County Court Clerk.
You want to do that on Marilyn? Okay, one of, of Marilyn's employees, I just recently discovered has, as she came to my office, um, has five years, I think it's five years, anyway, prior years experience, or employment rather, with the Board of Education, and, uh, it has been the county's rule in the past to let that person count that, whether it be with the Highway Board of Education or another county office, let that count towards their years of service as far as the wage scale, so this would give that person those years of service, and, and the amount of money that I had figured would, uh, retro that back to 7-1, beginning, the beginning of the fiscal year.
Everybody understand, anybody have any questions?
Emma.
I, now, I think at the time that, um, this lady came on to, to work, um, was, um, kind of a, um, real trying time for her at that point, uh, from, uh, loss for husband and, uh, probably an oversight, uh, she would just tickle to, uh, be coming on, and, uh, probably exactly didn't, didn't realize that she got that extra pay, so it's just now come to, uh, to our attention, what are your wishes?
It's just been brought to our attention, so I think we need to fix it. Um, I, I think we need to fix it from like December 1 forward and not, you know, backwards, I mean, we didn't know about it, so.
Right.
So, um.
I have to agree with Jeff, because we've had a few cases like this in the past and we've never made them retroactive, we've never gave back pay, so sometimes we did when the, the next budget year, but being as it is, I would feel comfortable if we did start it, knowing it was brought to our attention now, we will fix it, uh, knowing that there will be no back pay nor a retroactive pay, just starting December 1.
Was that in the form of a motion?
I will make that in the form of a motion, yes.
So we can clarify that the, the, the dollar amounts will change based on.
You will adjust that.
Starting with December 1.
December 1.
Okay, with the 1st December paycheck.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second?
What's your motion now to go from December 1 on?
December 1, from this point on, she'll get paid.
Be prorated from December 1 to the rest of the year.
Discussion.
Any discussion?
Uh, you know, in, in the work session, several Commissioners asked, you know, what with the President, that, what, what had we done before, had this ever came up before that we'd done? We had never done anything, but now you realize when you pass this motion tonight, anytime in the near future that anybody comes up and says, well, I'm missing two years, then you're going to have to prorate theirs out as well, whether it's budgeted or not, you're setting an example tonight that we have to do with anybody that comes up in the, that's, that's fell through the crack. Just remember when you vote tonight.
Can we pass a resolution from this day forward that they are require any increases that have to be presented?
It could still fall through the crack, you know, it just, you know, I forgot I worked, you know, before I came to the county, I worked two years and came straight to the county, and I, can I get that, you know? So, you know, if, if you do this tonight, then anytime in the future that this comes up again, make sure, you know, we're going to be bound by law that we done it now, we're going to have to do it then.
Could our attorney speak to this?
Well, I think we spoke to that in the work session, is that you, you, you adopt the policy by precedent, you, you don't have to have it written, you don't have to have it, um, under statute or law necessarily, because an employee after today would come in, just like Larry said, and say, hey, I, I'm asking for five years, or two years, or a month, or whatever it may be, whatever you do with this particular vote goes forward is the case, you can do, if, if you say this is a one-time deal, and I'm never going to do that again for any employee, most courts are going to say, no, that's not going to be, that, that, you can't do it once and say I'm never going to do it again, but that's worked that way.
But, so we couldn't adopt a policy saying, when you hire on, or you, as, you know, you take on employee, it is at the time you determine whether they have previous years of service, if you don't catch it at the beginning, we're sorry, you know, it's not relevant, you know, it should be brought, you know, could we adopt a policy or resolution saying that this is going to be our policy, if you want your service, you better tell it at the beginning, because.
I think if you make that very, very specific, that perhaps your Human Resource Director is going to be the one who goes, if somebody signs on new employees, they're going to have to go through her anyway.
Right.
And that's a checklist that she has, and you make that a countywide policy that everybody's got to be involved in, or you're all past their budget essentially, um, you just have to make that very, very narrow. I think if you say, all right, we're going to do these things for the fiscal year, or we're going to start it on, you know, the next pay period or whatever, I think that's where you go from there, but y'all need to really make that a very narrow policy that says, here's what we're going to do from this day on.
Let, let me say one more thing, uh, I, I'm not opposed to her getting the service, um, but, but I think it should start at the next fiscal year.
And it should be presented in Marilyn's budget, saying, hey, I've adjusted that.
Because, I mean, you know, it, it's not her fault that it's fell through the crack, but, you know, I, I just, as far as the budget standpoint, you know, if, if we do this tonight, and, and, you know, we may pass a policy, but I, I don't see it, I just don't see it holding up in court, I mean, if, if somebody comes in and says, well, you know, I forgot, you know, before I done my application.
Let's say this, I think you can say for new employees forward, if you pass, if you say today, and look, I don't care if you pay her for the last five years, or if you don't pay her another penny, it's whatever you do, you do, you set that precedent, I do think that is for existing employees, I guess there's a difference about people who come on new, like.
That, that's going to be our new policy from new hire.
That's going to be your policy for people who start from this date of hire forward. Now, people who are already working here, if somebody else finds out, I think you're just stuck to say, you're, you're going to have to go back and send it that rate, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Doing what Larry said.
Sheriff would like to address the Commission.
Um, when I came on, I came from, I was at school five years South Fintridge, um, my retirement moved over, so it had to be known, I mean, I had retirement at South Fintridge, five years, it moved over to my retirement here, okay? And I was not aware that my five years could move, I was not aware at all until last week, so, you know, basically my retirement moved over, so somebody had to know, okay?
But we have to look at the continuous service, right?
Yes.
I make the motion that she get in the next budget cycle.
But I would like to have my back pay.
Pardon?
I would like to have my back pay, I would.
There's already a motion on the floor. There's already a motion on the floor.
There's, there's a motion on the floor to, uh, start Ms. Whittenburg's, um, raise, uh, to, uh, recognize her five years prior experience with the Board of Education, for it to be prorated to start in December the 1st, is that correct?
It's correct.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Did you make it?
Did I make, did I make that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, based on what knowledge has been, can, has come through discussion and what Leslie said, I hate to set a precedence that could go from this day forward, so I'm going to withdraw my motion.
And I'm speaking to people who work there already.
Right.
I, I think if you all, next meeting, come in and have a very clear defined policy for new employees forward, here's what we're going to do for everybody else, that's different, whatever it is, if you give them every penny, if you give them half, if you give them none, legally that doesn't matter, what the actual amount is, what matters is what you do and how you define it, does that make sense?
Okay, uh, we've had the motion withdrawn, do I have anyone that wants to state a motion?
No action? We can review this next month.
We can.
Make motion to adjourn till next month, I'll say that.
We don't have to take any action. We don't have to take any action.
Okay, no action taken.
Mr. Chairman, I got one more budget amendment I'd like to do right quick on these two checks.
Okay.
Uh, if, if Marilyn would, on the records, make sure that it's noted that the Commission accepted check number 635, in the amount of 2,254.66, check number 732, in the amount of 4,509.33, from the Industrial Development Board, and also make a motion that that money goes into revenue code, revenue code 4163.
Which is?
In lieu of taxes. Is that correct, Marcia?
Are you asking if that's the correct code?
It's on page 10 of our budget book.
I don't, well, that sounds good then.
It just says payments in lieu of taxes.
Okay. Yeah, that's.
Here, that's a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Rule call, vote.